Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Judy. Although some favor, please raise your hands and it passes unanimously. At this time, I would like to let everyone know that Councilmember Palermo will not be in attendance this evening, and that has been approved. The next item on the agenda would be under the Mayor's Report, which is the election of Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have a motion from council?
Motion to name Shawn Grower, Councilman Grower, Mayor Pro Tem.
There's a motion by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey to name Shawn Grower as Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any... Do councilmembers have any questions before I open it up to the public? Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, well, let me start saying that seems to me it is more appropriate and reasonable to elect Councilmember Palermo, who has three years as a council member with the highest percentage of votes. On the other hand, Councilmember Grower had been only one year in office after his runoff to fulfill the last two years of an expired term. The third reason that I think that Councilmember Palermo should be the one nominated tonight is that Councilmember Grower did not communicate, to me, his intentions and interests to be considered for Mayor Pro Tem, which seems to me that Councilmember Grower is already comfortable and confident he will be elected with the usual three votes plus possible his own vote. And the fourth reason that I cannot support this nomination is that Councilmember Grower is the only council member who hired a lawyer and went in front of a TV camera with an issue clearly against a fellow council member. So for those four reasons, I cannot support the nomination.
Additional comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Willsey.
First of all, I would just like to say thank you to Mayor and Council for giving me the honor of serving as Mayor Pro Tem in 2018. It's been a privilege to represent the city at a handful of opportunities and to speak and to meet some very awesome folks who are doing some great things for the city and for the region. I just also wanted to just mention something, kind of the reason why I'm supporting Councilmember Grower. In traveling around and going to attending several meetings with different groups around the Atlanta region, I mean, it is clear that, you know, the Atlanta region, including Roswell, is growing at a very exponential rate over the next few years. Just on Friday, we were at a meeting for the recognition for the 40th anniversary of Marta, looking ahead to the next 40 years. And one of the most comments that's just really stuck with me is the fact that over the next 30 years, the city, the Atlanta region is going to, the population will grow by 50%, which is adding the population essentially of the size of Denver to the Atlanta region. So I'm really impressed with how Councilmember Grower has reached out to GDOT and to Marta and is working with relationships for Roswell on our behalf with the surrounding areas. And I think very important as a transportation liaison that he will represent the city well as Mayor Pro Tem. So, I support Shawn.
Mr. Davidson, can the Mayor Pro Tem speak on behalf of the city of Roswell and represent the city of Roswell?
Only in the absence of the mayor. The mayor is the official spokesperson. That doesn't preclude forming relationships, of course, but there's only one spokesman, and that's the mayor. Mayor Pro Tem in the mayor's absence.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Additional comments from council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one come forward, we've got a motion and a second. Although some favor, please raise your hands. And Councilmember Grower, are you not going to vote for yourself? I'd like to know if you think you can do a good job. I'd vote for you. If you're not going to vote for you. So it's Councilmember Grower, Tyser, Willsey, and Judy. Although opposed, Councilmember Zapata. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an amendment to Section 13.1, offenses involving public peace and order by adding Section 13.1.13, requiring legal identification when purchasing nicotine products to the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances. This is the second reading. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to the City of Roswell, ordinance to amend the City Code of Ordinances to require all retailers selling cigarettes, tobacco products, tobacco-related products, alternative nicotine products, including Juul and similar products, or vaping products within the city of Roswell, to require purchasers to provide legal identification showing purchaser's age to be over 18 years old prior to purchase of any cigarettes, tobacco products, tobacco-related products, alternative nicotine products, including Juul and similar products or vaping products. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell pursuant to their authority do hereby adopt the following ordinance. Chapter 13, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 13.1, offenses involving public peace and order of the Roswell Code of Ordinances is hereby amended by adding a new section 13.1.13 to read as follows, text of which is incorporated herein by reference and never approved. This will be the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I would also like to add, and I had stated this at the first reading, but I also wanted to add that I was approached by some PTA presidents about this going on in our schools, even the elementary schools, middle schools and high schools. And they are looking for a way to curb this. It's become the next epidemic, and our children are getting addicted to nicotine. There are several avenues we can take. I encourage the school board to take a zero tolerance on vaping. I also have met with our state legislators, and they will be bringing something forward at a state level that can curb this. But then also, there's already something in the works at the federal level, and I'm not sure how that is going to look once it makes it through. But right now, what they are looking at is requiring these products, the Juul, the flavored tobaccos, to be kept in a room that you must be 21 years old to enter. For those of you that are not aware of this, these vaping products, they're marketing them toward children with names like Cotton Candy and Sour Patch Kids and things like that. So what the Roswell ordinance does, and Mr. Davidson, you might want to chime in on this, but the state ordinance only requires that the proprietor, if there is reasonable doubt of the person's age, which is 19, they don't have to card. So if you think about it, and I don't know how many of you have neighbors or children that are middle school or high school, but oftentimes, these kids can be six foot three with facial hair. And if there is a reasonable doubt, then the proprietor has to card them. What this will do in the city of Roswell is that it will require that everyone be carded for the products if they are, it doesn't matter if they're 12 or 93, they'll be carded for nicotine products. So that's where we are on it. I appreciate the council's support in the first reading, and I look for that same support this evening. Is there anyone in council that would like to speak before I open it to the public? Yes, Councilmember Judy.
I just want to applaud you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. I've had some conversations as well with members of the community and saw a special on TV about the national epidemic that this has become, and it leads kids to have seizures. And kids in our middle school are being pulled out of school with seizures from vaping. And anything we can do to protect our youth, and so I applaud you for bringing this forward and fully support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Judy. Anyone... Yes, Councilmember... Yes.
I just also want to applaud this. I think it's wonderful to see Roswell taking a leadership role in this. As a father of an eighth grader, you cannot deny the fact that this is an epidemic, and it's shocking how fast it's spreading. So we can't pass this soon enough, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments from council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak about this Seeing no one come forward, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Zapata. Although some favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you all. The... What we're going to do is move the agenda around a little bit, and I will go to Councilmember Grower for the Transportation Department, item 13.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the approval for the mayor and/or city administrator to sign a contract with topple construction and engineering for the crosswalk at Saddle Creek Drive and Howes Road in the amount of $328,998 in budget amendment BA 35042200-01-14-19 in the amount of $250,000. Just to introduce this item a little bit, this is a pretty big project along Howes Road. This is far more than just a crosswalk, as Director Asenbrak will show us in terms of the engineering challenges we have to face to get this thing going and where it's located. But Saddle Creek has been incredibly patient as we've worked with GDOT and the city and figured out how to get this finally approved with GDOT and in front of us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Asenbrak.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Councilmember Grower, congratulations. I'll be assisted tonight in presenting this with our engineering design manager, Rob Del Ross. I'd like to say that Saddle Creek is a very nice subdivision within our community. They are struggling with a safety issue of the fact that their subdivision is actually split by State Route 140, also known as Howes Road. And they have the swim tennis facility on the east side, and then there's half the subdivision on the other that has no real accessible way to cross the state route. So working with GDOT now for many years and with the patience of Saddle Creek, we have worked through those issues and now have a project that is approved by GDOT and our staff and a safe way to actually cross the street, cross the state highway. And we're using some new technology to help us as well, so we're very excited about this project. I'll turn it over to Rob to give you some of the details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Real quickly, one of the reasons this crosswalk costs $300,000, it's not just a crosswalk, we're actually reconstructing a portion of the road here to widen and allow for the crosswalk to have a pedestrian refuge island in the middle of State Route 140. The signal control will be a device called Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons, or RRFBs. You've probably seen them around town. They're a diamond, a yellow sign with a man in the middle and flashers underneath. We have one over at Centennial High School. We have a series of them just south of this location at the Henry Howes Roundabout, serving as control for the crosswalks. Not much else to say. Appreciate Saddle Creek being patient. This project's probably a year or two later than what we originally planned on constructing it. We had a boatload of problems on this one, most notably one of my favorites being actually a federal trademark issue that we worked through last year. Here to happen, here to answer any questions you may have.
Does council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Great. Thank you for the presentation. And for the record, could you explain the reason that we're going with a higher bidder?
Thanks.
Page 83 in your packet is the memo from purchasing. We received two bids, one from topple, one from CMES. During the review process, CMES actually withdrew their bid, leaving us with one bid topple that we found responsive and responsible at a price that we wanted to accept.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grower.
Just, you know, one more thing to this. This is a focus on this is safety first. In the summer, I actually went out and observed this crossing situation myself, and we just simply can't have kids in Saddle Creek crossing State Route 140 without it being safe anymore. So I'm hoping that we can approve this tonight and move on. Thank you.
Additional comments from council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Yes, Mayor Henry and councilmembers appreciate the opportunity. Want to especially thank Councilman Shawn Grower and our friends here to the right. We've gotten to know them fairly well. Just to give you some background, and I do have a handout, if I could, for each of you.
So if you would identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry, Lance Ledbetter. I am a resident of Saddle Creek, been in Roswell for an excess of 20 years. Don't want to age myself too much here. But just a quick background, the letter that you have is something that was sent back in 2016 to City Council, but don't let that date, just two years, take that into consideration. We've been trying this for over 20 years with the city, and as you can now understand, of course, the complications in dealing with it being a state highway, so Georgia Department of Transportation being involved as well. But we appreciate everybody's support in this process. We have over 500 homes in our subdivision. Do basic math, 500 homes, let's assume half of them have children. Let's assume two of them per household and children. Those are walking across State Highway 140. Whether it's legal or not, they're doing it, okay? We only have one pool on one side, and from that, that's obviously the draw. So we appreciate the support, obviously, from a parent's perspective. Heaven forbid the day ever comes where somebody gets hit in the process of doing something that's illegal, but yet they're going to do it as children. So we appreciate your support, and I'm open to any questions if you do have it. But the aspect of what has been proposed, we're very much in support of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would also like to add that my original term on council, this issue was going on, and that is, I don't want to date myself, but a long time ago, goes back to, I know, 2001, that I'm aware of. And the city of Roswell recognized it was a problem. We've always wanted to do something about it. And at this point, is where I'd like to thank Steve Asenbrak and our Transportation Department's relationships with GDOT because GDOT does make the decision. They finally swayed them. It took a while, but I would like to thank staff very much for that. Additional questions concerned, anything from council? Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Seeing no one else come forward, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item number 13.
Motion by Councilmember Grower. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got dual seconds by Councilmember Tyser and Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Next, we will go to the Admin Finance Department, Councilmember Marcelo Zapata.
Okay, item number three of today's agenda, approval of the FY 2019 mid-year budget amendment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Each year, we go through a mid-year budget review process wherein departments submit mid-year requests to budget staff. The general criteria used to consider the mid-year requests are time constrained and items unanticipated during the annual budget process. After the requests are received from the departments, staff reviews available funding, and the department proposals are reviewed with the mayor. After discussions, recommendations are presented to council, and staff is seeking approval of the request from mayor and council today. I will start with the general fund. Staff is proposing recognition of additional revenue of $331,550 that has been received from insurance premium tax. We are also proposing recognizing a revenue of $4,402, which will be Alpharetta's share for the increase in the Rappstick Lawn Care contract. There is a corresponding expense for this, which will be discussed further down in the slide. The total revenue recognition in the general fund as part of the mid-year budget amendment is $335,952. The first operating request that we have is a request for additional funding of $200,000 for professional consulting services. This will be a recurring request and is for small to large-scale contracts, which have been funded from other sources so far. The second request is for the purchase of a campaign finance reporting software at the cost of $7,200 annually. This software program will automate the filing and management of the necessary forms for candidates and elected officials. It is designed to meet the state requirements. Then we also have a request of $10,000 for additional part-time funding for the Security Division. This will be an annual recurring expense again, and this request is to cover more hours for part-time marshals and security officers due to increased events at City Hall and more meetings being scheduled after normal working hours. The next request is to publish and host the UDC on Unicode at a cost of $17,550, of which $16,000 is a one-time expense, and $1,550 is a recurring expense, and that will vary from year to year. Funding this request will ensure that the UDC is updated in a timely manner. The next two operating requests are to increase the budget for the lawn care contract for the fire stations by $17,600 and at Rappstick by $8,305. These will be recurring annual expenses again. The new contract that was signed included an increase in price for the existing service, the addition of mulch to all fire stations, and expansion of the mowing area at Rappstick, hence that increase in cost, and hence the request for the $17,600 and the $8,305 by the fire department. Alpharetta will reimburse us 53% of the $8,305, and that number is shown in the revenue recognition at the top of the slide. The Police Department is requesting an upgrade to their in-car cameras, body cameras, interview room camera, and tasers, and the cost of this upgrade in FY 19 is estimated to be $382,847. A portion of that is being funded through money that is approved and available in the Police Department's FY 19 budget. Additional funding of $175,000 will be needed to cover the balance of that cost. And then budget staff is recommending a compensation adjustment for park police in the amount of $17,375. This will increase the pay grades of the park police to the corresponding pay grades used by the Police Department and provide a 10% pay increase to them. The annual recurring expense for this will be $34,743. The next budget request of $10,000 is to create and engaging an impactful way to illustrate Roswell's black history. This project is a promotional opportunity during Roswell Roots and Black History Month and is part of a new marketing initiative for black history beginning in February of 2019.
Excuse me for one moment, if I might interrupt. If the audience would please remain quiet so that it's not distracting from the presenter. Thank you.
And this request is also a one-time expense. And then the recreational... And then the Recreation and Parks Department is requesting increased funding for the maintenance of the historic Roswell Cemetery. The current approved budget is $23,500, and the vendor had given notice that they can no longer perform the maintenance task at the current price level. And purchasing has pursued pricing options from other vendors, and an additional $14,000 is needed to continue to maintain the cemetery at the current level. This will be a recurring expense. The Recreation and Parks Department is also requesting to move the full-time parks maintenance position from the Rec Participation Fund to the General Fund. This will make the operating budget of the Roswell Adult Aquatic Center uniform with all other parks facilities, and this will be an annual recurring expense of $25,227. So that gives us a total of $502,257 for the general fund operating requests. Staff is also recommending the carryforward of the unspent Rappstick Insurance reimbursement funds in the amount of $680,322, and we are also requesting the carryforward of unspent funds allocated to replace the uninterrupted power supply systems from FY 18 in the amount of $125,000. The current equipment has begun to suffer failure in multiple locations, causing interruptions to network connectivity, and these funds will cover the cost of the equipment, software, labor installations, and electrical work. On this slide, we have a summary of the general fund capital requests. The first one is the build-out of the finance suite as part of the space needs at City Hall. The cost of this project is estimated to be $100,000 approximately. And then the second request is to add license plate reader cameras at the Big Creek and the East Roswell Park at a cost of $40,000. These cameras will aid in safety in our parks and help in the reduction of car break-ins. The third capital request is for the replacement of a 2007 passenger bus for active adult and adaptive programs, and the cost of this bus is expected to be around $90,000. The next capital request of $40,000 is from the Transportation Department to begin the pre-acquisition process for the Old Ellis Extension Project, which was formerly known as the Sun Valley Phase Two. This request will fund the appraisals and title reports, et cetera. The final capital request is to replace the roof of the old mill-covered bridge. The roof of the bridge has deteriorated and needs to be replaced before any further damage to other parts of the bridge, and the cost of this repair is estimated to be around $150,000. So with this, the total general fund capital request is $420,000. Now this slide here provides a summary of the general fund requests and available funding. So we have the unallocated revenue from FY 19's approved budget, which was at $200,332, and we have the additional revenue that we intend to recognize at $335,952. So that gives us a total available funding for operating requests of $536,284, and our total general fund operating request for the mid-year are $502,257. So that would leave us with a funding of $34,027. And then we have the estimated FY 19 available fund balance over reserve by policy, which we estimate at 2.5 million, and then we will use a portion of that to fund the general fund capital request of $420,000. So that would leave us with an estimated fund balance over reserve by policy of a little over $2 million. Moving on to the water fund, so the estimated balance at this point that we are showing over reserve by policy in this one is at zero, and we are proposing a revenue recognition of $95,505, and this revenue recognition is basically the reimbursement that we receive from a contractor for the repairs of the community circle water line damages. So the available funding, oh, I'm sorry, I think there's a mistake here on this slide about the total available funding of 1.1 million. It should not be that number, it should be just 95,505. My apologies for that. And then in the operating requests, we have the repairs to the community circle water line damages, which was at $77,280, and then there is a request for the repair of the water transfer pump of $14,000. So that's a total request of $91,280 in the water fund, which would leave us with an estimated remaining fund balance over reserve of $4,225. We then have some requests in the Rec Participation Fund. The estimated FY 19 fund balance over reserve by policy in this one is at $750,000, and then the department is requesting to move a full-time position at the Adult Aquatic Center from the general fund, into the general fund from the Rec Participation Fund, so that would reduce that budget by the $25,227. And there is one capital request for a floating obstacle course for the pool, and that's $35,000. So that's a total fund request of $9,773, which would leave us with an estimated fund balance of a little over $700,000 in this particular fund. This request on the slide here for the Fleet Services Fund is to decrease the revenues and expenditures for the vehicle replacement program by 1.375 million, and this is basically an accounting adjustment recommended by our audit firm to ensure the city is accounting for the vehicle replacements in the most appropriate manner, and the net impact of this adjustment is zero. We also have a few mid-year budget adjustments in the Capital Projects Fund. Among the revenue adjustments, staff is seeking approval from mayor and council to recognize the shade stormwater agreement revenue in the amount of $450,000. This revenue is part of the agreement with Honda Carland that was approved by mayor and council. The next revenue adjustment is to move the vehicle replacement budget from Fleet Fund to Capital Projects Fund based on the suggestion from our audit firm that I just mentioned on the previous slide. So that will take our total revenue adjustments in the Capital Projects Fund to 1.825 million. Among the expenditure adjustments, the first one we have is to establish a stormwater best management practices project for $575,000. This project will be funded by the $450,000 revenue that I mentioned earlier in the slide, and the additional $125,000 will be moved from the completed Sun Valley Phase One project upon your approval. The implementation of the best management practices project will fund maintenance of this stormwater facility and implementation and maintenance of future best practices around the city. The next item is to move the expenditure budget for the vehicle replacement program from Fleet Fund to the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of 1.375 million, and I talked about this on the previous slide. The next two requests that we have on this slide are related. Now, there is $11,270 left in the Fiber Splice trailer project, and the Transportation Department has proposed using the savings from this project to fund the cubicle replacement project at Henry. There was $41,707 that was approved for this project as part of the FY 19 budget, but since the final quotes came in higher than expected, the department is requesting an additional $7,800. So that takes the total Capital Projects Fund expenditure adjustments to $1,821,530. With these revenue and expenditure adjustments, we will be left with an estimated fund balance of $3,470 in the Capital Projects Fund. That's the end of my presentation, ma'am.
Are there questions for staff from council? Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the finance staff, Ryan, your presentations and the work you do are always very clear and concise, and I know we've all asked you several questions over the last few weeks, so thank you for that. And I'm very much in favor and will be supportive tonight of the changes, and especially the new Rambler bus, the Rambler van. We all had the chance to spend a couple of hours on the Rambler van earlier this year. I can only imagine, based on the condition it was in at the beginning of the year, what it must be like now, and so I'm sure that our seniors will appreciate it, and I know if we all get a chance to ride on it again, we will too. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Grower.
Just one question regarding the remaining fund balance for the Capital Projects Fund. At $3,400, obviously, that's not a lot of money. Are there any concerns that you all have regarding kind of having that fund at that balance, or, you know, is there a reserve that we'd like to have in there?
Really, at this point, this is just our estimate. We're just wrapping up our comprehensive annual financial report, and in our Capital Projects Fund, the fund balance really consists of all the projects that are ongoing, but we don't really look to maintain a standing fund balance in that fund. That's typically relied upon with the general fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, it's going to be hard for me to support this 26-item bundle of diverse additions to our already 2019 approval budget, so I would like to comment, make some comments and probably questions about a few items. So, these have been bundled as one, you know, vote only, so I would like to go through a few items for discussion and consideration. So, I would like to start with, out of these 26 items that have been bundled, I would like to start with item number one. The $200,000 addition for professional services to be used at the city administrator discretion. You know, I think that, me as a council member, I would like to get involved on what kind of outside consultant services we're hiring, not only anything that, you know, because less than $25,000 could be contracted directly by the city administrator, but everything above. So, I would like to know also, for, you know, under $25,000, what kind of consultant services are we getting, and in which topics of the city are we getting? So, I'm not in so poor of giving a blank check of $200,000 for consultant services in the future. That is the first item that I would like to comment. So maybe we can go item by item and have a conversation.
If you would like to go item by item, and then I'll ask other council members to weigh in on your comments.
Okay. So I go, the other one I would like to make a comment as well is on item number three, Security Division Part-Time Marshal Hours, increase expenditures by $10,000. And one of the reasons given is more events being planned and held on City Hall grounds. You know, more events is very generic, which I would like to see more data in here, how many more events during the last five years, and see how many more hours are we using the facilities at City Hall to justify this additional $10,000. So on these items, I would like to see more information, more data driven to make a decision here. The next one will be item number 11, full-time position at Roswell Adult Aquatic Center from general fund, increase expenditures by $25,227. So here, what we're doing, we're moving from the Recreation Participation Fund into the general fund, and it will be good to know how much money are on the Recreation Participation Fund. So for the record, and why not to, with the Recreation Participation Fund, not to finance the operation? And then from the general fund, we can finance capital projects on our parks. So, actually, I see instead of moving one to many, I see more moving many into the Recreation Participation Fund, and then if it's not enough money on the fund to support our operations, then we can contemplate moving money from the general fund into the Recreation Participation Fund. But I think that that is more of probably a philosophical conversation. The other will be item number 16. You know, we are all in agreement that these old buses have to be replaced, but we've been already at the city level studying on our fleet, vehicle fleet, owning versus leasing. It's ongoing right now, the study to see if leasing is better for the city and the taxpayers than owning the vehicles. So here, again, I totally support a new vehicle that is much needed, but it's not enough information at this point of buying versus leasing, what is more convenient for the taxpayer of Roswell. So this is another item that I would like to see more information before making a decision. And that will be all the items that, the rest, I have no problem from the list here, but those are the ones that either I don't support, or I do need more information to make a smart decision on the 2019 mid-year budget amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start out with the $200,000 that is going to go for project consulting. In our email this week, we received an email from our city administrator with his list of what he would intend to spend that money on. My understanding, though, is that it's not a blank check, that the city administrator will have to come back to this council for each specific item that he intends to spend the money on. I believe that's true, I believe that's the way it would work, and I think if somebody wants to confirm that, that'd be great, but I believe that's the way that'll work. Each of those projects, at first blush, seemed to make sense, but again, we'll see those all in committee, we'll bring them all forward independently, so it's anything but a blank check on that. As far as the aquatic center funding, Harpreet, if you could clarify that when we're finished, I think that is a maintenance person?
Yes, sir, it is a maintenance position, and what happens with most of the rec facilities, in fact, all of the rec facilities, all the maintenance positions are funded by the general fund. This was the only one that was not, that was going out of the Rec Participation Fund, so in order to make it consistent, it was decided to move. That's why the department is requesting to move that from the Rec Participation Fund to the general fund.
Thank you, that was my understanding as well. And I know the Rec Commission and Director Leatherman have a number of projects, they've done a five-year plan of the kinds of things that they need to spend money on, and some of them are pretty sizable numbers, you know, specifically how we're funding our gymnastics program and the physical facility that they're rapidly outgrowing. So, that one really is just to conform with the way we're doing all other maintenance projects, and so I'm supportive of that one. As it relates to the own versus lease, I don't think, I certainly don't have a problem approving it to be a purchase, and then while we're in the process of looking at the specific vehicle, determining whether we might want to lease it versus own it, and then we can make a decision at that time, but I think I'd like to give them the ability to go ahead and get that thing ordered and on its way, because I'm not sure that the old Rambler bus will make it very much longer. So, thank you, Harpreet.
Additional comments from council? I would like to just make one comment in general, and that is, if I remember correctly, the Ramblers raised money for the initial bus, and they donated that money to the City of Roswell. I know that we are going to have some good news from the Ramblers coming up, and I want to make sure that they are aware that we need to replace that bus. I realize the check will be given to the Friends of Roswell Parks. I realize the check will be given to the Friends of Roswell Parks, and I'm not sure what our authority is over receiving that, but I certainly would like that expenditure to be considered from the Ramblers. No other, some council, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public? Yes, please come forward.
As always, thanks to Ryan and his assistant. They give a great, easy-to-understand presentation for those of us sitting back there. I just have four items. I didn't have a pen to write them down, but I just have a quick question. I think you're allocating $12,000 to the historic cemetery. Curious, which cemetery? The one on Sloan Street or the one at the corner of Woodstock and Highway 9? Just a point of which one. Number two, the bus, the Ramblers' bus. If we get rid of that bus, what are we doing with it? We're going to donate it to somebody? We're going to sell it and get some money for it? These are, if you were trading in your car, you would consider that in that transaction. And I think we need to look ahead rather than after we sit there and there's a bus sitting in the parking lot for a year because nobody thought of what to do with the old bus. It's called common sense. Number three, there was some money being spent, again, I think it was $12,000, I could be wrong, for a water transfer pump. Is that from our new water facility up there off of Dobbs Drive? Because water transfer pump repair, $14,000. That facility is not very old. If that's where the pump is, why are we having to repair it so soon? We spent $16 million on that water treatment plant. It went from $8 million to $16 million in cost in five years. And I am stunned that after a few years, and it's literally been a couple of years, we're going to pay $14,000 to fix something. And my final question is, $35,000 for an obstacle course, floating obstacle course in a swimming pool? Well, you know, I go to the pool every day, but I want to know which pool. It can't be the Adult Aquatic Center pool because there's no room in that pool to put anything. Is it for the Roswell Area Park pool? We need to be more specific when you say "the pool." We have two now. So, which one is it? And $35,000 sounds like a lot of money for an obstacle course that's floating in a pool. Just me, the citizen, wondering what the specifics are. Everything's been too general, in my opinion, in those ideas. But do think about what you're going to do with that bus. There are a lot of communities that would fix that bus and use it, bumpy or not, because they need a bus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one come forward, I do have several answers for you. We do have a surplus company that will dispose of our vehicles when we retire them. And then, the Adult Aquatic Center, it is my understanding that that is where the floating obstacle course will be. Oh, it'll be Roswell Area Park.
It's for kids.
Yep. And then also, could someone please answer the question for me about the cemetery location and the pump?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Leatherman, I'll tackle the cemetery question. That will be for our Woodstock Cemetery is where that contract is, and we'll be using that contract there.
Related to the transfer pump, that is, again, the repair of a transfer pump at our new water plant. It is not a replacement of the entire pump. However, the pump was damaged due to some ancillary equipment failures, including valves. So, it is repaired. It should not be happening again. It was not covered under warranty, and it was not something that could be anticipated by the staff from the exterior appearance of the equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Skalsky, and also Mr. Leatherman. I have closed the public portion of this meeting. Is there a motion?
Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, again, as this was, this mid-year budget amendment was presented as a bundle of diverse additions to the already 2019 approval budget. And there is some relevant information missing of some of the items that I already mentioned before. I will make the motion to deny the 2019 mid-year budget amendment.
Motion by Councilmembers Zapata to deny. Is there a second? The motion fails for a lack of a second. Is there anyone else that would like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the mid-year budget request.
Motion by Councilmember Tyser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor of Councilmember Tyser's motion, please raise your hands. It's Grower, Tyser, Willsey, and Judy. All those opposed, Councilmember Zapata. The next items on the agenda are Community Development Department, which is Councilmember Michael Palermo. He does have an excused absence this evening, so we're going to play musical chairs. And what I would like to do, the first two items go to Councilmember Judy. The second two, Councilmember Willsey. And then we'll go to Tyser, Grower, and Zapata for the last three. So, if you would present those and make the motion when the time is right.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Item agenda number four, approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code, UDC, for typographical changes to Section 3.5.11 and 4.3.5. This is the second reading. Ms. Stiebel.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Sections 3.5.11 and 4.3.5. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend the Unified Development Code, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this will be the second reading.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the second reading of the text amendment to change 15 inches to 15 feet. That is currently located in Section 3.5.11. And to change five inches, 20 feet, to five feet, 20 feet. That is located in Section 4.3.5 of the UDC. These were typographical changes that we are requesting for the second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Stiebel. Does council have any questions? Seeing no hands up, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Public comment is closed. Do I have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve, number four.
Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
Number five, approval of a text amendment to the UDC Unified Development Code regarding Section 10.2.5, buffer installation, the second reading. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend Unified Development Code by modifying Section 10.2.5, buffer installation. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend the Unified Development Code, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this will be the second reading.
Yes, this is to remove language that indicates the width of a required buffer is calculated on the average width per 100 feet of the buffer. So, by removing the language, a buffer will always remain the same width in feet, no matter the length of the buffer. So, on my drawing here, so I'm not an architect, but if you have a property line where the 190 feet is located, you go 40 feet in, that length, no matter what it is, will always remain 40 feet. Currently in our buffer, if someone had a buffer that's more than 100 feet in length, they could do an average. So, in some locations, they might do 20; in other locations, they might do 60. But this would remain the same, no matter what. So, 40 feet is what we are looking for. So, we want to remove that language, so we have 40 feet across the board.
Thank you, Ms. Stiebel. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing no hands up, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? I'll close the public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item number five.
Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grower. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Councilmember Willsey.
Item number six, approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code regarding Section 13.3.4, public notice and hearing requirements. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Section 13.3.4, public notice and hearing requirements. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend Section 13.3.4, public notice and hearing requirements. Letter B, web notice of the Unified Development Code, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this will be the second reading.
Yes, this is to remove the wording, but not more than 45 days. Currently on our host site, the city website, we put our notices up for zoning items, and they are up for longer than 45 days on the web. So, since that's not a state requirement that we have to meet certain requirements for the 15 days and 45, we'd like to remove that 45 days, since that is up for probably 60 to 75 days.
Does council have questions for staff? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item number six.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Willsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
Next is item number seven, approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code to modify Article 13, Sections 13.6 and 13.7 regarding design plan review and historic review. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Article 13 regarding design plan review and historic review. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend the Unified Development Code, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this will be the second reading.
Yes, this is to change a word in Sections 13.6.4, 13.6.9, which is the design review section, and 13.7.4 and 13.7.9, which is a historic preservation section. We are changing the word "minor" to "administrative," as the section for minors, that we call them minor design plans for HPC and DRB are approved by staff, and that wording gets a little tricky. So, we'd like to remove that word "minor" and change it to "administrative." Thank you.
Does council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item number seven.
Motion by Councilmember Willsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It passes unanimously. Councilmember Tyser, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Approval, item number eight, is approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code to modify Section 13.7.2, when is a historic review required? And this is the second reading. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Section 13.7.2, when is historic review required? Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend Section 13.7.2, when is historic review required, of the Unified Development Code, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this will be the second reading.
Yes, this is for language that has been requested by the state. We currently do this. However, the state has asked us to place this in the Unified Development Code that states no land disturbance permit or building permit shall be issued without the approval of a certificate of provenance on the property. Thank you.
Does council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item number eight.
Motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Councilmember Grower.
Thank you, Mayor. This is item number nine, approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code regarding Section 14.2, defined terms.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Section 14.2, defined terms. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend Section 14.2, defined terms of the Unified Development Code, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and if approved, this will be the second reading.
Yes, this is to add a definition for the word "breeze way." As discussed, we have two different definitions here, which is a porch or roof passageway open on the sides for connecting two buildings, such as a house and garage. And a cover passageway is between a house and garage, sometimes with the sides enclosed. Both definitions were approved at the first reading. Do you have any questions?
Questions from council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, item number nine.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Grower. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It passes unanimously. Councilmember Zapata, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 of today's agenda, approval of the initiation of the text amendment to the Unified Development Code regarding Section 2.2.11, building height. Mr. Davidson.
This is an initiation.
Okay. So...
We don't need to read it. Thank you, Ms. Stiebel.
This is the initiation for Section 2.2.11, which is the building height section, letter C, and deleting Section 2.2.11, letter E, and combining it with letter C. So, currently, we have, where a lot slopes downward from the front property line, one story that is additional to the specified maximum number of stories may be built on the lower rear portion of a lot. What we're looking to add to this section is to state, as long as a minimum of 50% of this floor is below the street grade and the basement with 50% or more of its perimeter wall, thank you for the typo there, area surrounded by natural grade is not considered a story. What was also added at committee is the second paragraph, is where a lot slopes upward, where the natural grade rises up from the front property line, and administrative variance may be requested to allow one story that is additional to the allowed maximum number of stories to be built underneath the ground, as long as 50% or more of the perimeter wall of the story is below natural grade. So, this was worked out with staff and architects, working through these definitions, myself, the deputy director, and an architect discussed these. To better explain a little bit, the double lines over here is the street. That is a lot sloping upward, to give you a little example of the bottom portion, and that would be a house, square house, with two levels, if you think of it as a two-story, two-and-a-half-story house. The portion below shows that the lot slopes upward. So, that would be where the bottom half of our definition would indicate that someone could come to and request an administrative variance. They'd have to show the design, they'd have to draw it. So, this is an initiation. There are several steps yet where this would have to go through. Obviously, it has to go to planning commission for the recommendation, and they would have two readings before the mayor and council. So, the wording can, we can work through the wording between now and the time you see again, which would probably be about April or May of this year.
Thank you, Ms. Stiebel. Does council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Zapata. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And the vote is Zapata, Grower, Willsey, and Judy. All those opposed, Councilmember Tyser. So, it carries four to one. The next item on the agenda is the Environmental and Public Works Department. Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 tonight, approval to amend the city of Roswell Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Utilities and Services. Mr. Skalsky.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This ordinance revision will update our utilities as they pertain to solid waste, and the primary substantive changes that we're making, in addition to a number of typographical and grammatical changes, include definitions for recycling and recyclables, adding language related to our curbside household collection program. program, and clarifying the curbside large item pickup program, and amending the section to address the location and construction specifications for our commercial dumpsters. So I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Before we do that, Mr. Skouski, would you please read this? Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, mayor. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 24, Utilities and Services, Article 24.1.1 through 24.3.5 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Roswell. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, pursuant to their authority, do hereby adopt the following amendments, the text of which is incorporated herein to Section 24.1.1, Section 24.2.2, Section 24.2.5, Section 24.3.2, and Section 24.3.5. Have approved. This will be the second reading.
Does council have any questions for staff? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 11.
Motion by Councilmember Judy to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is public safety, Councilmember Willsey.
Item number 12, approval for the mayor and our city administrator to sign a contract amendment with Axon camera system in the amount of $1,919,865.
Good evening. We are requesting approval for additional funding to the Axon camera system and to replace existing interview camera equipment in our interview room. This will also upgrade the police department's TASER cartridge replacement system. Currently, a lot of our cameras are old, they're approximately eight to 10 years, eight to 10 years old. When reviewing, when viewing video, the video is grainy and unclear. This makes it difficult when we're submitting these videos for evidence into court. It also prohibits any type of liability issues on the city and the department when we have to do this. Any questions? Captain McCray is intimately knowledgeable in this area, so I'm going to defer any questions to him.
Thank you so much. And for those of you that have not met her yet, I would like to formally introduce our interim chief, Helen Duncan. We are very excited that she is willing to take on this role. And does anyone have any questions for staff? Seeing no hands up, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Seeing no one come forward, you've gotten off easy on this one, chief.
First time's a charm.
Do we have a motion? Move to approve. Motion by Councilmember Willsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tyser and Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. The next item on the agenda is the city attorney's report. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you. The first item I have is approval of amendment to the current ground lease between the city of Roswell and Verizon Wireless regarding the lease and rent increase on Old Dogwood Road on property owned by the city of Roswell. This would increase the rent from approximately, a little over $1,000 a month, to $2,500 a month, or $30,000 a year. It would give them five years plus three additional five-year renewal terms. Recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Does council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Judy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grower. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item I have is approval of the extension of the lease agreement in option with the Downtown Development Authority on the property known as the Skillet property until August 30, 2019. Currently, the lease in option will expire in March. Recommend approval.
Mr. Davidson, could you explain a little bit more about why this extension is necessary?
Currently, the DDA has a contract, or is working on a contract with SJ Collins. The proposed close date would be June 30, at the latest, 2019. This August 30 extension would allow them to exercise the option and close on the property. It gives a little leeway for things that come up with closing on real estate. This would give the, an extra 60 days, roughly, timeframe in case something does come up.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I would also like to add that in real estate matters, this is a very compressed timeframe, and we certainly do appreciate Dave Schmidt's hard work in the DDA, because they have been able to pull this together on the second go-around, and we appreciate the way that you've handled this. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for Mr. Davidson? Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, mayor. More than a question, I have a comment. So, you know, one of the five projects that were presented contain no residential component, and all the elements that the majority of the community needs and wants, and has an early closing day that will not require any kind of extension of the lease. So two things here. One, does not have residential component, and have all the other components that the community, the majority of the community wants, might not be the choice of some developers, but there was a developer who proposed a great project, and on top of that, second, proposed a closing day closer than the one that DDA or Downtown Development Authority chose. So based on that, I won't be able to support the extension of the lease.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. Councilmember Tyser?
Thank you, mayor. I want to be somewhat careful in how I make this statement, but because much of these details remain in closure, the, but I would ask Councilmember Zapata to take a look at his information and check to make sure that the comment about whether the project he referred to would or would not require an extension of time. And so I just, I think that would be important to take a look at.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyser. Councilmember Grower?
We've been looking at the Skillet property for years, hoping that we were going to, we were going to redevelop it. I think the SJ Collins proposal is absolutely fantastic. I look forward to working with them and seeing what they can bring to the city of Roswell, and I hope my fellow council members will be collaborative and work with them to get this thing closed and construction underway as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Grower. Councilmember Judy?
I just think we need to be careful when we say from here that the majority of the citizens wanted something, because I don't think there was a vote taken from the citizens in the city of Roswell that said that that's what was wanted at that location. So we need to be careful, because I've spoken to many people that are overwhelmed and excited about this project. So I think that's a very slippery slope when we say that.
Thank you, Councilmember Judy. Any other council member comments, questions? Is there anyone in the public that, yes ma'am, please come forward?
Thank you. We're going to be renewing this lease, according to Mr. Davidson. Just for the public that are watching this on live stream, I would like to review quickly the details of the lease agreement with the DDA. I think it's been a long time, and a lot of people who live here have no idea what the details were in that agreement with the DDA. Among the things that I remember, and I could be incorrect, I think we leased it to them for what, a dollar a year, a dollar a month? I don't know what it is. And as I recall, we paid cash for the property, sorry, we paid cash for the property, and we were told that if there was a profit made when we sold the property, that the profit would go to the DDA. I need to know if that is still part of that agreement. I'd like to know also, as a taxpayer, we bought that property with the excess money from the Solid Waste Management Fund, AKA the garbage money. And I want to know if we sell this property, and I look forward to a new project there. We've been looking at that slum for 50 years. However, we drained our garbage fund to pay cash. We overpaid for the property, by the way. And if you look in the notes from four years ago, I said we overpaid, and we would be held hostage by developers to make it very high density so that they could pay what we asked and make a profit. And it seems that my prediction has come true. I want to know if the money that we recoup from the sale will be returned to the garbage fund, because that's where it came from. And a few months ago, we increased our garbage bill by $4 per household, so about $50 a year. Since we have about $5 million extra if we get it back in the garbage fund, we need to rescind the increase on the garbage rates, because we don't need to charge our residents more money. Otherwise, in my opinion, and a lot of people, not the majority, but a lot of people, think that all we're doing is paying an extra $50 a year into a slush fund for city of Roswell to buy another project. So we need to make sure that that money doesn't go to the general fund. It came out of the Solid Waste Management Fund. It needs to be returned there. And I know the city has a policy about X amount of dollars have to be in different departments for rainy day funds or emergencies. I said a few years ago, if we have $5 million extra in the Solid Waste Management Fund, we're charging our residents too much money. And we hadn't raised our rates in 14 years, as I was reminded, and we still had $5 million extra in the garbage fund. So we need to review where that money goes, because people are not happy that the garbage money bought property. The profit goes to a group of people or an organization that invested $0 in it but are going to get the profit, if there is one. I'm just sharing with you the concerns of the people in this town. It's our money. That is publicly owned property. The city should have never got into the development business to begin with. It should have let the market take it. But we did, and we spent taxpayer money to buy the property, and now we're, if there's a profit, we're going to give it away. I want that kind of investment. I pay nothing, and I get the profit off of something I sell? I like that. So please, Mr. Davidson, would you review for us the details of that agreement with the DDA? Thank you so much.
Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, mayor. The option price on the property is $4.85 million. That is the price the city paid for the property. Where that money goes, if there's more, that's probably going to the DDA. That's not going to be city money. The, the DDA is a public entity. It's a state authority with its purpose to serve the downtown development of the city of Roswell. As far as where the money will go when it is received from the city, I believe it goes back into the Solid Waste Fund. That money, Brian can probably speak to it better than I can, it's been determined to be an asset, so there's never been a shortfall of that money for the department, because that asset has been worth $4.85 million the whole time. So it's been an asset of the city and been used as such. I believe that's correct. Ryan is shaking his head.
I would also like to add that there are capital improvement projects that are revenue generators, that the Solid Waste Fund is very much in need of, and we can always talk more about that. But I think it's very important for the city to invest in our solid waste or garbage department, because there are some exciting things, exciting, things coming our way, and when there, whenever there is an opportunity to generate revenue, we always appreciate that. And thanks to Mr. Skouski for, for working on those projects. And it's very, it really is very exciting what we can do. And we generate revenue that keeps costs down for our citizens. So I just wanted to add that. Are there other council members? Yes, Councilmember Tyser?
Let me just add a little bit to what you've said, mayor. Mr. Skouski and his team have a multi-year capital plan, and so the fund builds up through the years, and they know what capital items they need to spend on in future years. But it takes a while to build up to that number that they need. I think that multi-year capital plan can be viewed publicly, and I'd certainly welcome anyone to take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Tyser. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Any other additional comments from council? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve, approval of the extension of the lease agreement in option with the Downtown Development Authority?
Motion by Councilmember Willsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grower. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And those in favor are Grower, Tyser, Willsey, and Judy. Those opposed, Zapata. It carries. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you. The final item I have is recommendation for closure to discuss personnel litigation in real estate.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for closure.
Motion by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Willsey. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It passes unanimously. We are adjourned.